...in Florida for two, two extra days. Just bad.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they said, oh, you know, I said, but they live in New Jersey, so you can come to my house to stay. They said, we're gonna go to work. So they're still in the hotel. It's just, it's really bad, so. The outside minus whatever, inside is minus.
The bad thing is that not only you gotta deal with that, but there's so many people that have to deal with that, then you can't get a contract.
Right.
You come in and do the work because he's so busy.
Yes, yes, dealing with everybody's problem, so. Anyway, um, but. Is the other person coming, Laura or the new one?
Yeah, we need, we need to start. I don't know, Matt went out.
So seven o'clock?
Yeah. We have a customer. Is that what I am? Well, it's been a while since we've had one.
A public.
Well, he's now, he's not public, he's a customer.
He's involved, that's right.
Could you tell me your name again?
Advocate.
Joe Loguiroto, L-O-G-U-I-R-A-T-O.
U-I-R-A-T-O.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good places.
Well, a week and a half in DC and then we were in New Orleans for a week. That was the good part.
Yeah. The warmer part.
It wasn't more than.
Stephanie's train is late.
There we go.
Is that Larry?
Yay. So we can, we can start. Now that the women outnumber the men. Which has never happened on the Cold Spring Board as far as I know.
Oh, funny.
What about the, what about the Village Board now?
Yeah. Rockin'.
Howdy. Thank you. Dave, could you introduce me to the folks I don't know?
Huh?
Would you introduce me to?
Our new people.
Your new people?
This is Michael. He is the best at recording the meetings. And he's back for good.
Yeah.
We're not letting him go there anymore.
All right.
We'll have to talk. You better start making some more cookies for him.
Nice to meet you. I'm Laura.
Laura and Sue. Okay.
Oh, you're handing out checks?
Oh, good, I did deposit that.
How about that?
That's the problem.
We'll deposit. I just assume I never deposit a check. Okay, all right, we'll get started off the order of the meeting of the, what do we got, January 11?
Yes.
2018 Cold Spring Planning Board. Let's see, we got. We have no correspondence. Nothing to report. Do any of the members have anything to report?
Just that we're very grateful for our two new members.
Exact, right, we have Lara Eldine and, and Sue Iron.
Yes.
Who just joined. This is their first meeting. We'll, we'll go, if anything, anything else, we'll go on to the minutes from the prior meeting, which we made Matt, Judith, and Dave. Good, so we have a quorum to do these minutes, which has been a problem. We'll give you guys a copy just to look at. Obviously, we're here, but you can take a look.
All right, thank you.
Matt, what's the date of these minutes you're?
Uh, these are the 12, 7, 17 minutes.
Thank you.
I don't remember who, who'd motioned what, but they sound good to me.
Exactly. Actually, you guys might as well actually just, if you wanna, if we captured your interviews correctly, if you guys have any questions before it gets memorialized.
Oh, I see.
The little bits on you.
Yes.
You fine? Does it sound like you?
No, everything.
Hold on a second.
That's fine.
Looks good.
My, my full last name is Shehab Eldine, but it's, yeah, it's, uh, just for the record.
It's a hyphenated last name. It's actually, yeah, that's the official.
My email is Laura Elden, so it's confusing.
Okay, just with that, with that change, can I have a motion to accept the December 12?
I moved that we accept the minutes as so nicely written.
I second.
Call a favor? Aye. Very good. All right, so we have one order of business tonight, and then we'll, at the end, I figured we'd kind of just walk the new members through 126 Main and 35 Market, just so you know the two applications that are in front of us. Predominantly, most of that is gonna happen in front of the HDRB. Typically, the planning board is lead agency on Seeker, the State Environmental Quality Review. You guys must know what that is, having built a house recently and obviously being an architectural designer, so. But in this case, almost all the impacts were really related to the demolition of a historic structure in the district. One in the national and the local district, 126 Main, which is Carolyn's Flowers. And then the other one is the Carriage House down at 35 Market. They're calling it a deconstruction and reconstruction, but obviously you gotta demo to deconstruct something, so they'll have to, you know, and the way Seeker is, it looks at all the environmental impacts. One of the environmental impacts is obviously view shed and village character, especially in the, in the historic district. So the, the loss of the building plus then what would replace that building, obviously, is really much greater impact. So we've got very little, down 35 Market, there's very little going on, and then 126, we'll kind of go into the meat of it later, but we'll kind of bring you up to speed, but most of the stuff will kind of be happening at the, at the Historic District Review Board for those two applications. The, and the attorney, I don't know if I announced it at the last meeting, but the attorney agreed that we can waive the hearing for 35 Market, 'cause it's just a little silly to have two public hearings on that application. It's a very simple application, they're basically, that's the deconstruction and the reconstruction of that Carriage House that as you go right down towards the train, the agreement sits right up close, right up front. Well, we can get it, we can go into the details as much as you guys want or as little as you want, just to kind of understand what's going on. So we've got, we've got Joe here, who's interested in talking about, informally, we don't have an application yet, but talking about a change of use for the, for the PCNR building.
So this is not his?
No, that's not his, that's for days at the end. So we'll, if you wanna kind of monop and just talk about your, yeah, about your project, just in general, it's, it's an informal discussion.
We'll put a chair.
Yeah, good idea. Are they connected?
No.
Okay.
So you, you bought the PCNR or you wanna buy it?
No, I meant, I hope to buy it. Not there yet, but things are moving along. I got the inspection today. And, you know, it's a neat little building. I'm an artist, so the intention is to eventually have an art gallery in a lower level and live upstairs. I have a house in College Point, Queens. I've been there, the corporate art director for twenty-some odd years, and I work at Brooklyn College CUNY, teach part-time and design marketing material for them. So the thought is that I'm going to retire and just turn 65 a couple of days ago, and.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. And sell my house in College Point and, you know, make a complete transition. If everything works according to plan, that will be like a year kind of transition. I have a couple of kids that are still home and, but almost out of school, so I wanna get them out of college and on their way to their careers and commence by being where it is. Commence, please.
Launch.
Yes. And then I can, you know, relocate a year.
So when I moved here, that was an art gallery on the first floor and an apartment on the second floor.
Is that so?
There was a really old guy that was in there who was a painter.
I have that.
What, okay, great. Great, so obviously, one thing that we're doing that, we kind of tightened up things, we got an owner's endorsement, so where people are applying for changes to a building that they don't own, either 'cause they haven't yet purchased or because they're a leasing tenant, typically, we see that a lot on the, on Main Street on the ground floor. We added what's called an owner's endorsement that's notarized, so the owner of the building is aware that somebody's applying to make a change or application, so then everybody's on the same page, so. And what, the current, the current, yeah, the current use is just, it's, the whole thing is office, right?
Yeah, right? The upper floor, they turned to office?
Not really. The upper floor is not in use. The public, the newspaper is basically using the ground level.
Well, I think that's since the, the current, the current owner of the newspaper, right? I mean, the other bill, you know, when the ALs owned it.
I didn't, I don't know, yes.
Yeah, no, no, they used, they used to record, they, they, they had that, like, focus on Phillips Town.
Yeah, so, of course, I don't know that. Upstairs is pretty much vacant, I mean, there's some furniture up there, but it's my understanding that they, it's not office space.
Is there still a kitchen up there?
There's a kitchen up there and there's some living room furniture. But there's not a, it's not an office, the speaker, the, the function downstairs is, you know, office, terminals, computers, and then a desk and office in the, in the back room. So the offer, the low, the ground level is the functioning space. They may use upstairs a bit, I don't really know that, but it, it looks like a living room more than anything else.
Well, well, they did, but that's not unusual in an office, right, to have breakout space, common space, you know, kitchen space, that's.
It's my, yeah. It's possible, it's my understanding that.
No, no, they did use, in fact, they even used it for video recordings, there was, they would bring, yeah.
There's a tripod up there, so.
Exactly. So, yeah, so it's part, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a common amenity of the office, right, that it would be, that they, there's no bedroom up there, right?
No.
Yeah, exactly, so I mean, it's a, it's the, you know, it's a, it's a, whatever they call it, breakout space, quiet space, quiet refuge, you know, whatever you call it. I have a designer here. You know, 'cause everything's open plan.
Yeah, exactly, it's all.
You gotta someplace to go think. So, yeah, so that's what it was for, so the whole thing is essentially office, so it would really be a change of use to kind of split the two. You'd wanna do, you'd wanna put an apartment in upstairs?
I'm not gonna put an apartment in that, the kitchen is there, there's a bathroom and a shower already, and there's a large room, a studio room, which will function, I'll have, yes, I'll have a studio.
So it'd be a bedroom, yeah.
A bedroom. Well, I'll have a bed up there, yeah, so, yeah.
And that has a window? The, the, the studio room has a, has a window?
Well, the front windows, the front, the, the, these.
Oh, it's the front, it's in the front of the building?
Yes.
That doesn't sound like it was changed at all from when it was an apartment before.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't, but you obviously gotta, you gotta have a window and a bedroom for egress and, you know, I don't know if it was like a, you know, walled off room in the back.
No, it was, it's basically two rooms, the large room up front, which goes out to the porch and the two windows.
Okay.
And the kitchen, and then there's a little deck.
So unfortunately, I tried to shed weight and I brought the wrong surface. I don't have the code with me, but it's one space per 150 square feet on a, on a retail. The apartment would, everything here, let me take a step back, everything here is almost always parking, right? Because it's Cold Spring, which is, you know, Victorian village that just, you know, there was a, that's a walkable village, and so there's not a whole lot of parking, so what it comes down to is, is actually kind of when we go to do these change of use applications is parking. The current methodology that we have back in 2010 from a change in the code is what's called payment in lieu of parking waiver. What they used to do prior to that was, it was just kind of a, almost, with the best interest, and what was intentional and what was the best they could come up with was kind of this, you know, this way to come up with parking, like, maybe you would go three blocks away and have a contract with somebody that has a garage, and you would say you're gonna park there, which we all know is kind of silly, it typically isn't the way anything's happening on Main Street. But it was a way to get for the code, you know, for them to say, okay, there's a change of use, you comply with parking. Because our parking, we have code in our parking. For, for a residential apartment, it's two spaces. And for, for retail, which a gallery would be, it would be one per 150, right? So if it's, you know, I think the, what are the floor plates? Is it 2,000 total or is it?
Yeah, I believe so. It's not a large building.
There's no way it could be a thousand, 2,000 for each floor.
Yeah, no, that's way too big.
No, no. I believe it was 2,000.
Yeah, so. And really, it's only gonna be, on the first floor, it's just gonna be what is accessible. I mean, if you're gonna use stuff as, I would imagine some of it is storage. I mean, an art gallery, typically, everything is an out, right?
Yes.
So what it would be, what's that?
Yes.
Okay, so what it would be is you could take the square footage of the floor, so if, if it is 1,000, which is, obviously, it's gonna be south of this, but 1,000 divided by 1, that's 50.
That 1,000 sounds very big. It sounds like they took the floor space from the outside of the building.
The act, the lot size is 2,000 square feet.
Oh, they're lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Even at, yeah, so even at, even at 1,000 square feet, that comes to 6.6 spaces. So what it is, so in 2010, they came up with this payment in lieu of parking waiver. So it's a code way, what those are is to purchase waivers for the parking spaces that the code says are required. And it, you know, it kind of sounds like a, you know, like a, like a scheme, 'cause you're kind of selling spaces that we don't really have. But the intent, the legislative intent, and what they're really doing, and one thing that you can see the effect of it, is to take that money and earmark it for dealing with parking problems. So right now, they're currently selling parking waivers, the last they approved, and they're, it's, the fee is set by the board, is $250, $250 a waiver.
$250 per spot?
Per spot, yeah.
Forever, or per year?
Right now, it's, right now, it is, yeah, so it's, you basically just do it, it's a, it's a one-time waiver that, for that.
So it's a one-time fee.
One time, yeah. So even if you were to take the full, the lot, which is way too big, let's call it, it's probably gonna be 800 square feet, probably less, right?
I haven't been in that building for a long time, obviously.
They say, they say the lot size is 2,000 square feet, but there's a deck in the back, so that takes up some space.
There's a yard also.
And a porch in the front, which takes up space.
There's a little yard in the back.
Yeah, so that means it can't be 2,000.
Shouldn't be that, you know, you're probably, it's probably like around seven spaces, you know, maybe six spaces. So you take that number times 250. The board, what the board would do is just hold a public hearing to take input. You do a parking table, I'll send you a sample parking table. The, the, an apartment, a residential apartment needs two parking spaces. It's, I think, you know, the, the question is, the board would have to vote on it, whether or not they support it. Parking waivers are not for the expansion of, of any use. The legislative intent was as a mechanism to approve changes of use on buildings so they could be processed. But I would think that there's enough of an argument to say that there's, that there is historical evidence that it was a, that it was an apartment at one time and that that's long-term parking. The first floor is absolutely not in question at all with respect to the legislative intent and the board's past practice, it's a Main Street building. You need the parking waivers, that's what the parking waivers are there for. So I think unless you were subdividing the upper floor and trying to increase the number of apartments, I would, I would think that the board will consider it, you know, obviously, you know, it's up to the board when we, after we take public input and then have a hearing. What happens then is then the board makes a recommendation, either yea or nay, to the Village Board, who has the ultimate authority of whether or not to grant the waiver. In the past, in past practice, there's no, you know, no guarantee of, you know, of what's gonna happen. They typically grant what the planning board recommends unless they see some sort of, I'm not aware of them not taking exception with the planning board recommendation, not issuing waivers, so it's typically pretty straightforward. I personally think, not personally, but as my position on board, that the apartment is, is reasonable to say that that's, you know, it's a use that has been there and that the parking, it's not an expansion of residential, you know, to start subdividing and then, you know, and then creating more demand, because the problem isn't just that, the problem is that spaces aren't there, right, that they're, parking is a very, is a very, is a very big problem here. So to create more demand with, with the cars having nowhere to go is not, we can't, the planning board, because in fact, we're supposed to be planning, can't really turn a blind eye to that, so we're really, like I said, one of the biggest things that we typically focus on here is parking, because it's, because that's kind of the challenge. So I would think it would probably be somewhere around seven spaces, no, not north of that, I think it'd probably be south of that, it could be six. You know, and then you'd take that, if the planning, if the, you basically would do a floor plan. You know, basically, just a simple line drawing of a floor plan, show us the square footage. You don't, you don't count stair, stair throats, cutouts. So I think you're gonna get even smaller, right? I think your stair, you know, your footprint.
I would need to supply you with that?
Yeah, so that would be, that would be what your application would need, a very simple line drawing that somebody would just sign, because we'd need to know that it's accurate. You have, are you working with an architect or no?
Uh, no.
Okay.
There's no need to, I wasn't.
Because you're not gonna do anything, right? It's perfectly fine if you wanna just do it yourself, I mean, I think just make sure you double-check your measurements, 'cause obviously, you're gonna, you're gonna sign off on that.
Right.
But, you know, like, you would also exclude, you know, if you're not, if, if, if something is really kind of not part of the retail establishment, like, if it's basically just a storeroom, obviously, that isn't included in the parking, you know, because you're basically talking about the square footage of what's actually in use, 'cause that's what really creates demand. I mean, obviously, if you, you know, you build a showroom that's, you know, 10,000 square feet, you expect a lot of people to come and they obviously have to put their car somewhere, so there's, it is a, it is a direct corollary of what kind of what, what the demand is, so. You would just draw a line drawing, you kind of cut out this, 'cause that has a fairly big stair throat. It also has a, an elevator, right?
Yes, it does.
Yes, so I mean, that's not usable square footage that you would just carve out, you would just say that's not part of the square footage.
Right.
Yeah, for Roger.
Okay, so I would do that for the ground level and upstairs?
You don't really even need it for upstairs, because, yeah, I'm sorry, you do, I'm sorry, do, do that for upstairs as well, just to show us, basically, because what we do need is an updated site plan to put in the building file, to say that the building, that, you know, if this all goes as planned, that the change of use has been filed, and the downstairs is retail. Retail office, retail and office combined, and then the upstairs is a, is a separate residential apartment. That way, 'cause the, that's part of the reason for change of use too, and the why you go through these, you know, these, you know, the, the work of an updated site plan. So the Village actually knows what's, where, you know, what's happening in each building and the compatibility of those uses, so. Yeah, you would do a line drawing upstairs, just very simple, just basically showing us what's there, that it's a one-bedroom. A one-bedroom apartment, it's only, it only requires two parking spaces. It's really one, it's really two per unit, so I mean, even if it were a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom, it's still two parking spaces in our code. But just show that it's a one-bedroom, just to have something for the site plan, so show the upper floor, just a line drawing, a neat, clean line drawing with the address on it and dimensions that you verified, and then the parking table is.
Verified through a site plan?
Do you have a site, is, do they do it? They probably did, I bet there is a filed survey.
It's somewhere, I, I don't have it yet myself.
I would be amazed if the prior owner didn't get a new survey and all sorts of, you know, documents. That, yeah, I mean, 'cause you'd wanna kind of know where your boundary is and whether or not you have encroachments and. I'd be surprised if there wasn't one. I imagine it's by baby and Watson, they own all the maps. Have you, have they checked with them or?
Yeah, they're looking into it, yes.
Okay, yeah. Bring, yeah, bring that too, if you have it, and so the application, it is a, it's a building in the national district, so anything in the national district under State Environmental Quality Review, Seeker, is a type, is a type one action. So unfortunately, you do have to fill out the long form, which is a, it's like a 13-page form. You're gonna have a lot of just not applicables, to be honest. And I don't, you know, the board will, you know, will review the information, I don't believe there's, you know, there would be any indication that there would be, and it was called, it would essentially be considered to be a negative deck, because I mean, there's no, there's no impacts. You're not changing the exterior, you're not even changing the interior, but nevertheless, we have to have something for the file for the state to say we went through a quality metal, quality environmental review. So, so we'll, we'll send you that too when you're ready, so it's just the application that you fill out, which is pretty straightforward, it's PDF, that you can fill in with PDF. And then a site plan, if you have it, like a survey is always good to file, to have it in your building file here. Then those two line drawings, I'll send you a sample of a parking table, which is basically just gonna have two rows. You know, you're gonna have a retail office row, and you're gonna have a residential apartment row, you know. The retail office space, you just take the square footage and divide it by 150. It's one space per 100, it's one parking space for 150 square feet of usable space, right? So.
What about storage? Is that usable space or?
I think if you, I think if it's a, so I'd imagine you're probably gonna have a gallery in an office or?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna have a gallery, the, the back room will be office and storage.
Yeah, so I think the, the office would be included, but just dead storage would not be, I mean, I think that if it's, if it's not really in use and isn't really creating demand, I mean, what do you guys think, as far as the square footage being counted?
I, I think, I mean, you're not gonna create a, a parking situation with dead, dead space.
Yeah, I would imagine with artwork, you're, you're storing, and stuff not anyways out.
Now, what if the, the quote-unquote "living space", which requires two spots according to what you said, one of the rooms in the back is part of that? Does it matter that it's on a different level? Or does that constitute another living space?
Is that storage space or gallery space?
I'm just asking a theoretical here, if that space was used.
Yeah, I don't think it matters, because I think the, the residential space will require two spaces.
You're right, yeah, it said, and we go to parking, we go to two anyway, right?
For the sake of application, it'd be better to keep them separate. You're not gonna have the public up there, right? I mean.
No.
Is that your intent?
No.
No, I mean, it's an apartment.
I might have the public in the, in the room all the way in the back as well.
Right. Yeah, no, I think if, I think if the upstairs, I mean, you can have stuff, you know, there is, you know, we all do some work from home, and that's just part of the residence.
The, the lower level consists of basically four rooms, right? So the first two will be the gallery itself. The third room, there's like a kitchenette in there, and that'll probably be for storage or whatever, and the last room, or maybe an office and, you know. And the last room, I'm not quite sure, but it could be an extension of the living space from upstairs or a combination of all the above, and that, so how do I?
Or you would break, you would break through or?
No, no, not breaking through, just, you know, you know, maybe have an exercise bike in there, you just, that's living, not, not, not studio or work, right? You know what I mean? How do you define one from the other? It doesn't matter.
That's the employee health benefits section.
It doesn't impact the parking, because the parking is established as two regardless of the bedrooms and so forth anyway, right?
Right, but I, I, I think it starts to get confusing as to how you fill out the parking table and how you do the floor plan now.
All right, so then just keep the, the living spaces upstairs, the lower level is business.
It sounds like that's essentially your intent anyway, right? And, you know, look, if stuff spills over, I mean, it, it's a single, you know, I mean, in fact, if you were to take away from the retail, obviously, there's less, there's less demand on, you know, short-term trip parking. The short, the long-term parking.
Yeah, the retail is basically gonna be the two rooms up front.
Right.
As far as people walking and looking at art.
So the question is, shouldn't he only give us the measurement for the two rooms up front?
That's what I'm getting at, thank you.
What's the third room?
Kitchenette.
Kitchenette, storage, possibly, probably.
Let me, let me take a look at the code, just add, just add it all in, we can modify the parking space. I mean, I know that we had some, if you remember in Butterfield, there was a.
I didn't pay attention to Butterfield.
There was carving out storage. No, 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 this is in the, in the amended application, that you did pay very much attention to. That there was a, a, a request to kind of carve out storage. And we said that can kind of get a little, it can kind of get a.
So, yeah, look at the, so measure, make sure all your measurements are accurate, the floor space for each room, and by that time, Matt will have figured out what we count.
And we'll talk, and we'll talk to the Village Attorney as well.
Yeah, try to get a floor plan if it exists somewhere.
I would imagine it does, I would think that, I mean, but it's not that long ago that they.
I've been asking for it, but I haven't received that or the site plan yet, so.
Yeah, it's not that long ago that they, that they did that renovation, so.
Now, you had mentioned that the, I guess you folks, the planning board makes a recommendation to another.
It's the Village Board.
The Village Board. And you said that most often, they go along with your recommendation, the recommendation being the number of spots. Six or whatever.
Not the number, they're, they're not gonna, I don't believe they would ever question the number. They might, they could, they could look at the math and say they see things differently. It's typically whether or not they, you know, whether or not they wanna grant the waiver. 'Cause they're the legislative body, they have.
Is this all about parking or usage of the building in and of itself or?
No, it's allowed use, it's a permitted use. There's no, there's no question that the use is permitted, and the Village Board wouldn't really, wouldn't really get involved in that. They'd look to the planning board to say, is this a permitted use? So it's a.
And it is, the use is okay, it's, it's the parking.
Yeah, so you're in the, you're in the B1, and you're, which is the Business One District.
Right.
And allowed use, residential is allowed in every, in every district, right, a single, single family or an apartment.
Right.
Retail and, retail and office is absolutely allowed in B1.
Right.
So you're, they're permitted uses on the code. There's no special.
It's really the parking is more the issue than the usage.
As I said, that's, that's, we spent a lot of time talking about it, yeah.
The usage drives the parking, as an example.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yes, obviously, yes, I get it.
I mean, if it was a restaurant, it'd be a space for every three seats in the restaurant.
Exactly, okay.
Yeah, you count chairs.
Well, it's the way I know of restaurants.
Yeah. Or a lot of seats.
But it's just a one time fee and really-
Yes.
It's not that high. I mean-
Two fifty per spot.
If I were in charge, it would be, got another zero after it, but.
But in actuality, the, it goes, and of course, this is really not my concern, I'm just curious. It's, there's, there's no spots available. I mean, it is what it is. It's not like you're gonna to establish a parking lot somewhere
Right.
on top of a building or wherever. Um, so the money goes towards, exactly what?
Well, for instance, it helped pay for the, the parking infrastructure on the lot over the municipal lot, helped pay for the machinery.
At the, at the train station?
No, the one across from condos.
By the riverside, uh-
A river here?
River, yeah.
I knew we were around here for two twenty.
So it, it helps us pay for parking infrastructure that helps mitigate-
Yeah, so one thing-
Whatever you need to, right, right.
Yeah, one, one big thing in parking is forced vacancy, to keep people moving and that's what meters are about. They're also about making money too, but they are also making people leave a space. So that study was done and they bought parking meters for municipal lot, and it is generating a significant amount of income for the village. That was paid for by these earmarked, you know, by these earmarked parking funds. So there is a, there is a, there is a logic to, you know, kind of this, um, you know, and-
So, but there's, uh, I guess what I was, uh, just wanted to ask before, clarify, is that the, uh, the possibility of the village board, rejecting the, you, the planning board is slim or?
Highly unlikely.
I wouldn't, yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take a position on the village board, I, but I will tell you past, I've never seen it, right? So, and, um, you're not expanding the residential use, which, which could be an issue, um, getting past us, that could be an issue. Um, you're, it is what the parking waivers are for, is to take an existing Main Street building that is not being enlarged or divided and creating a, look, if you were to take the upper floor and divide it into four, well then everybody needs a parking space, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, so that creates more demand. You're not doing that. You're basically saying there's an existing, um, it was a pretty, it was a, it was a pretty densely populated office too. I mean, there, I, there were quite a few people in that office that drove in. You know, so I mean, it's, I think you're, I don't, I don't think you're increasing demand at all. So we don't, we can speak in the abstract about whether or not those things are favorable, and they are favorable, right? Because you're, you know, the use is what was the legislative intent, which is to take existing applications on Main Street that could not accommodate parking. We, we have another one that we're gonna talk about that can't accommodate parking, one of the few that we, you know, will ever see on Main Street. I think only the second one. But this one can't. So that's what the parking, the payment of parking waivers are all about.
So once I, I, I pay whatever is established, six, seven, five, whatever the case, will be based on the drawings I supply to you and all that. Um, it's a one time fee.
It is one time fee.
I live to be a hundred and ten and I don't pay it again?
Nope. The only thing, it's, it is a, it's, it's, it's for a-
I have to ask.
It's for a one time, it's for a one time change of use, right? If you wanna change your use again, then it all gets recalculated, yeah. You can't, you can't say, oh, but this didn't change, that changed.
You can't start selling tacos in the art gallery, right?
Exactly, yeah. Then you gotta get, then those, those five that you bought, don't get applied to, to eight seats, right? You, you have to, you start over.
So all this being said, I, I, you know, I, um, I'll leave one person living there. I'll have people visiting, perhaps my kids, I like the thing. Where do I park my car?
Yeah.
On the street.
I just park it on the street, so I, I'm just gonna go around parking for parking.
Except when there's winter.
Oh, yeah, then, yeah. And then you can't park in the winter because the snow, when it snows, yeah.
Speaking of Main Street.
Main Street.
Right, right.
Well, anywhere in the village, because they need a plow. So, uh, people park in the municipal lot, people-
When I say parking, I, I'm thinking parking on the side streets.
No.
When there, when there's winter parking, you have to park by the ball field. That's the closest place.
There's a, uh, I don't know if you've been up on, uh, Morris Avenue at all.
Yeah.
But, you know where the tennis courts are?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay, opposite the tennis courts, there's parking there. A lot of people park there. It's first come, first served.
Is that a school or something or what?
Well, the school owns the property, right. But people park there, you know, during the winter.
And then you can also, I mean, when-
Like, for instance, today I came and I parked on Church Street. Is that not acceptable?
No, 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 it is. It's, it's snow.
We're just talking about when there's snow over.
Oh, wait, it's snow, of course, yeah.
When snow is coming, you, you call the, you, you call the-
I'm just thinking about, I remember me living there.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. When you, when, when snow is expected, you call the highway department, there's a recording, basically says whether or not you can park in the street.
I understand that. It's somebody of weather condition.
Because they have to, because they have to plow. And that's, and that's all public streets.
Absolutely, sure, of course.
And there's areas around the village where there's time limited parking and there's also unlimited parking.
I see that, right, right, right. After five Main Street is good, weather, weather permitting.
Right, right.
And then when, when there's a storm, everyone parks at the, at the field?
Well, not everybody fits there, obviously. I don't know, I don't know what goes on. I mean, I-
They park down on Campbell too.
I saw emails-
Park on the municipal lot.
During Christmas, people looking for parking spaces, you know, on Facebook.
The good thing is, if you live to a hundred and ten, you've already got the elevator. You've got a car.
I'll make it in, right?
And then I'm sure as you, you know, as you, as you meet folks too, there's probably people you can, you can make arrangements with to, you know, as far as parking.
That's what happens.
I, yeah, I was told that there's, I'm not sure whether it is, but there's two spots that they're paying for on the, it's a private thing, has something to do with it.
Well, then you should figure out where the spots are, cause you might wanna buy one.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, I probably would, like, like.
It gets, it gets really, really busy. I don't know if you've been up here when the ferries come up.
Yeah, it's great. There's one reason why I'm here. I've been coming to Coleswee for quite some time. Years ago, I, I did a painting of the gazebo and the corporation I worked for bought it, so it was, you know, I-
Oh, nice.
I'm not a complete newbie.
Yeah.
Um, this is a great, uh, place, a great village and I look forward to it.
You drove up all the way from College Point to talk to us today?
I had an inspection for the building as well. And I went to visit a friend of Song's.
It was like, oh, did you give your money to us?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, well, I, well, he's trying-
It wasn't bad, it was over an hour.
Well, he's trying to figure out whether or not he wants to proceed, right? Whether or not to proceed with the purchase, cause obviously you don't wanna-
Well, I mean, it's true. I mean, if, um, I, I, I guess I, they're bugging me to give them the, uh, get the contract going and I want to make sure everything's fine here.
There's no surprise.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty-
So before I do that, so I just, um, you know, I don't wanna rush into something and then come back here and suddenly I'm a problem, you know, I don't want that.
Uh, we certainly can't make any, you know, make any, uh, make any representations with respect to how the board vote. Obviously, the village, the village has a, any change of use requires a public hearing in our code. We gotta take the input from the public. I don't, I don't foresee any issue with that because you're not really changing-
I'm not doing anything out of the ordinary.
Yeah, you're not, you're not opening up a nightclub, right?
Right.
But there's nothing about the building that, that we would wanna give you caution about.
I, I'm pretty risk averse. I would feel comfortable proceeding, but that doesn't mean anything other than me. I mean, but we'll, you know, the board will consider it with all the information. I don't imagine the public hearing, there's gonna be anything that would come up that would be of any surprise because it's, you know, right now, it's essentially office, you know, it's, it's office space.
Public hearing is here?
Yeah, yeah. It's required under our code, under our, under our municipal code.
Do a lot of people show up?
It depends.
Depends on what issue.
With picket signs and such?
It depends.
For some projects, yes.
Oh, of course, depending on, right.
For a change of use.
Yeah, for something as simple as that, yeah. I mean, we'll see. I mean, you know, these demolitions on Main Street, demolitions, I mean, those will-
People will come.
Those will, people will probably come for those, um, but-
Well, I suppose I will be here sometime in the future too with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's, you know, I, uh, it's a, it's a great place. I think I will fit in well and hopefully be an asset to the-
It's great. No, it's a beaut, it's a beautiful historic building too. They did a nice renovation of it.
I did a lot of architectural drawings of historic buildings in the city.
Yeah.
I've had exhibits, uh, a number of them. So, you know, it's, if you were to look at my work on my website, jolojaro.com, you, you'll see why I like that building.
Okay, great, yeah, it's great. It's a beautiful building.
I write it in my alley.
Especially since you don't have to renovate it. I mean, they spent a lot of money on it.
And they did a fine job.
They really did spend a lot of money on it.
I look forward to it. I really appreciate your time.
Absolutely, yeah. That's why I figured we're, you know, we're pretty informal. We're happy to have people come in and talk ahead of an application, especially if you have any concerns about purchasing it. That's why we wanted you to come in and-
Okay, so what I need to do then is, uh, get the site plan if possible, which I should be able to get, um, and create those drawings, accurate drawings with the footage, so you can determine the number of parking spots.
And then, so what we do is we'd have one, we'd have a workshop, which is we, again, it's gonna look, feel just like this, but we're gonna, you know, everybody's gonna pull out their pens or whatever and, you know, we're gonna take some measurements and say, you know, we'll figure out what the number of parking spots required are. We'll confirm that we have everything we need. Of that, from that public hearing requires that you notify the neighbors that a public hearing, that an application is open on the, on a neighboring building to them. So typically what we do is really the, you know, the adjoining buildings and then across the street as well.
Apply the apartment and the club.
Yeah. So folks know, yeah, I don't know who we notify there. The village owns the building, but the tenant, probably, we probably just notify both. So you have to send out, you know, the green card certified return receipt mailings to say, okay, this, there's an application. Um, there's gonna be a public hearing on this project on a certain, you know, on a date in the future. Uh, it has to be in, we put it in two issues of the paper, so we have to allow time for that. So working back from that, we'd have a workshop and say, okay, we're ready for a public hearing. Let's schedule the public hearing. I think for something as simple as this, we can do it in one workshop. Um, we typically get folks out in three, even complicated things, three meetings total. I think we probably do this in two. You know, with the public hearing, uh, with the attorney.
So I should do all this, this all should happen be, obviously before closing, before it would-
No, no.
What's up to you? It's up to you. We've had people that have, we've, we've had people that have delayed purchasing a building until they got all their, uh, till they got all their approvals in place. But that, that was a person that was doing some major renovations for it, on a building in Main Street.
Oh, once again, this is, this is paid straightforward, so I shouldn't be too concerned about that.
This was like a- Yeah, this was a deconstruction and a movement and it was, yeah, I mean, and so there was a question as to whether or not historic, historic review was involved, zoning was involved.
So in my case, it's not, it wouldn't be uncommon for me to move forward with the contract and even the closing and so forth and, and everything that we're speaking of here will coincide with that or happen after?
Well, again, we can't make any representations as to what's gonna happen with respect to what the village board will do. But there's, we don't have any requirement that you, this is the only requirement we have, is that the owner knows that you're, you're filling out an application, right? And that you're looking for a change of use on a building that you don't own, right?
Right, right. Oh, I get it, right.
But you don't have to, yeah, you don't, you don't, if you had, if you had concerns about the approvals, then you would do the approvals upfront. You know, if you, you know, the last one that we did that did that, um, was doing major work on a historic building on Main Street. Eventually had to be moved and the foundation had to be rebuilt. Um, so every board was involved. The Historic District Review Board, the, the Zoning Board of Appeals because there were setback issues, and then the Planning Board. So getting by all three of those before you, you know, after you purchase a building, only to realize you can't do what you need to do.
Yeah, exactly.
That would be bad. You don't have that kind of exposure, cause you're not, you don't need to see all those boards, you only need to see us.
Okay.
And you're asking for something that is in line with the legislative intent of these parking waivers. It's, it's a permitted use in the district. Oh, and by the, I, I didn't mention, you get one space grandfather on Main Street, so you deduct one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's one free, yeah. Yeah, Main Street businesses always have a grandfather of one.
Okay, great.
So you would deduct one. So it's not, it's not terribly painful. Um, and it is, you know, look at as, um-
It, it ultimately goes to a good use anyway, as you had.
That, and then also too, and then, yes, and the other good use is then your building file's accurate, right? When anybody says, like you said, I'll never have to do this again, you just say, you keep copies of everything, hopefully the building inspector does the same and, you know, the file gets pulled and you say, listen, this is all allowed, right? You know, I bought my parking waivers, here's the site plan, the change of use is in place, you know. To do it without doing that, well then you always run the risk of, you know, kind of, of somebody challenging something later, whether it's a neighbor or the-
Well, that's why I just wanna make sure I go through the right procedures and-
So that's what I said, so you'll, you know, you'll deduct one, so you'll get one free space and then, and you know, so the last time they did parking waivers-
Whatever we determine it to be.
Yeah, the last time they did parking waivers was two hundred and fifty dollars. I don't imagine they're gonna change the fee, but it's entirely up to them. Um, but they haven't changed it in a long time, so, um, and so you could do it, you could, yeah, you could absolutely do them in parallel if you're-
Okay, great, great.
Okay, great, excellent. Thanks so much.
Okay.
Great, thanks. Nice meeting you. Have a good night.
Thank you so much. Thank you, nice meeting you.
Yeah, good luck.
Okay, nice, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
We'll just go, we'll do just a quick update on what these projects are. So we have two. Um, one of them is really not much for this board, which is, um, which is thirty five Main Street. They're, um-
Market or Main?
Thirty five Market, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, did they come in and talk when I wasn't here?
I don't know, is that right?
Cause I've never heard, I, I wasn't, did they actually come in?
Yeah, yeah, she did.
Okay, so I missed that meeting.
So what we did was we, you know, we said, if we can, we'll, um, we'll, um, waive the public hearing. John thought that was perfectly fine.
So there's absolutely no change in the site plan? It's down, it's up in the same footprint?
Well, yes, yes. And that's why I think it's important to get an updated site plan, to make sure that nothing does change, right? And that then you file a new site plan. There is an argument to say, is there any planning board involvement, right? There, there is an argument to say the planning board's not really involved. I don't entirely agree. I think that if you're gonna take a building down-
Somebody has to look at the site plan.
And put it back up, well, did it go up in the right, in the same place, right? And then also if you're gonna take a cottage and turn that one into a garage, let's make sure we show it on the plan now as a garage, not a residence, right? So I think that it's important to get updated site plans. Um, we didn't used to do that.
But no near, no need for a hearing?
Well, yeah, because I mean, they're gonna have a public hearing over at the HDRB, right, on all the seeker and, yeah.
Very, and, and they're the lead, like you said.
And ADK, um, AKRF, the environmental consultant is gonna be, yes, lead agency, right? And it, cause they're doing, they're the consultant for the HDRB. So this is the site plan, which I didn't know either, I haven't seen it either, so. So this, I believe, is currently residence that's gonna go to garage. So-
Oh, so there's a house behind it?
Behind it, yeah.
That's interesting.
This is the cottage that-
That little, little of-
That they're gonna deassemble and then, and then also too, this, it's, this stuff is important. Even the village attorney had talked, well, do you really have a right to ask for an updated site plan? And I, I said, I think we do. I said, because I, I wanna see this stuff for the village, that if all of a sudden this parking goes away.
Oh, wait, 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 this is, oh, this is the driveway into the mansion.
Yeah, yeah. So they're gonna accommodate-
So this is existing.
Yeah, so this stuff that was parking up here moves down here.
What?
They're gonna, they're gonna create parking here.
Okay, let, let's start from the beginning. We have a garage here that you can see from the street.
I think it's a, I think it's a residence right now.
Yeah, but it was a garage once.
No, it's proposed garage?
It looked like, it used to look like, it used to look like a garage, then it was turned into a residence. They're gonna turn it back into a garage. Then there's this historic cottage, which will be taken apart and re-put together on the same footprint?
Yes. And it'll probably be slightly larger, cause I think they're gonna do a lot of insulation. I don't know if they're gonna pass it, but I think they're gonna do a lot of insulation.
But if it's larger than it's, is larger than the original footprint, isn't it?
It's the minimum, yes. It's the minimum, so.
So all the parking for this, this, and this is here? And this was approved with the understanding that it was parking for all three in the original approval?
Well, I think there's three parking-
When they built this.
If, there's three parking spaces someplace else, I don't remember where.
There are, yeah.
Uh, it might be down around here. They don't show them.
Well, they're inside.
There are three, yeah, there are three.
One, two, three.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the garage.
Right. No, that's the, the new spaces.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's the new, that's gonna be the new garage.
Are in the new garage, which is the old garage.
Right.
So guest house, cottage, house. This is a new house, possibly?
No, it's there now. It, it was built about ten years ago.
Oh, okay. So, um, it's, it's, so all three structures exist currently?
Yep.
As is, in terms of, and, and they're not being increased or decreased, so.
And that, and that's the big thing. So typically the things we look at are parking, but they're accommodating the parking. We also look at storm water management, right? But they're not really increasing roof lines, they're not, you know, they're not moving things around.
Or changing grade.
Or changing grade, yeah, no, there's none of that. So, um, but I do think it's still worthwhile for the village to get an updated site plan on file, to say that this is what's really going on, cause then, then you run the risk of this isn't understood. This isn't even understood to be a garage. It could be flipped back to a residence very easily, right? So I think it's important that we, when we look at these things and we get these referrals, that we actually get an updated site plan. Um, and we, we work really hard to get these folks through here at about three meetings. Um, and these things used to go on for months if not years, you know, so I mean-
How many meetings have already?
She only came in for one, a very informal meeting, and the rest of this can all be handled at the HDRB. She only came in for one, a very informal meeting, and the rest of this can all be handled at the HDRB.
At H, okay.
We may even, um, we can attend their hearing if we want, but we waived the, we waived the requirement for a public hearing. We have the right to do that, cause there's no change of use, change of use, you have to have a public hearing.
The one, two, three, how many?
Four, five, six, seven, eight, yeah.
Those were existing parking spots, no, they're, these are, these were not there, so.
They use it as, not parking, but as a garage, so they got some in there.
But, but.
They used to just park everywhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a large driveway that goes down to the pier.
Okay, so there's no real concern in terms of like adding.
Adding parking.
They won't be, they won't be parking on the street.
There's no added paving or anything or added, um, impervious anything, so, but it doesn't seem to matter.
Yeah, so it's a pretty light application.
Is this all the same, um, taxman lot?
I assume as much. I'll just look at the referral.
There's a lot of space there.
Yeah, it's huge.
Well, this is a big, um, big rock cropping there.
They're only calling it one, yeah.
It says twenty-nine to thirty-five Market Street on the top of the sheet there.
Yeah, but it's all one taxman in order.
Is this the, the one that has a, this is the one that has a Downey sign on it?
Yeah, yeah, the Downey.
It was from the Downey property, yeah.
Okay, I know exactly where this is.
That's what this was, this is used to be where the oil would come in by, by tanker. Back in the day.
But why is the sign still there, is it still a Downey property?
Doesn't he, or did he sell it?
For a while.
Oh, I knew it was for sale for a while.
It's, it, it looks like a office sign, you know, I always wanted, wanted to, to say it's like a Downey's office.
I think they left it up just because they're, you know, it's a family property and that that's their business.
Uh-huh, it's kinda historical at this point.
Yeah.
Like I said, the pier, this was the pier, there's a pier down here where the barge would come in with the oil.